Call the meeting to order. The time is now 9:35. Quorum of the Board is present. State Board of Education meeting of September 14, 2016, is called to order. Approval of agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda minus the vote on the LGBTQ guidelines. If, just a second, I'd like to speak. I think we made a motion to approve the agenda and order of priority.
So he can move to amend then. Alright, so let's do the motion to approve first. It was moved by John and who seconded it? Alright, so that's to approve it. Now you want, you wish to offer an amendment?
Usually we amend motions before we adopt them, but sure. I would like to put off voting on the LGBTQ guidelines until a future meeting. The reason for that being that the federal case law is unsettled. A new administration may take a different interpretation to the Title IX issues, and that's a real possibility. We do not have the underlying laws that other states that have adopted similar policies in our state, and we have not yet received a report on the 13,000 public responses. And I would like to be able to review that before we make a vote on this revised set of guidelines.
Alright, is there a second to Dr. Z's motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. So Pam and Cassandra, we had a motion to approve the agenda. Richard has asked for an amendment to strike the LGBTQ from action today, and that's what's being discussed at the moment. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, please.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
The amendment to strike the LGBTQ from discussion today. It's been moved and seconded, and, I'm sorry, Dr. Z?
Could I ask for roll call on this?
Yes.
Ready? Amendment to strike the vote on LGBTQ guidelines from today's agenda. Austin?
Yeah.
Fecto?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Ramos Montini?
No.
Strauss?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Weiser?
Yes.
Xylee?
Yes.
Six-two.
So the motion fails two to six, so we go back to the original motion, which is to approve the agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion?
Aye.
You two opposed?
Two opposed.
Two opposed. Thank you. There is an information folder item 2014-15 Carl D. Perkins Consolidated Annual Report. No action is required, but it is at your seat. Introduction of State Board of Education members and guests. Marilyn, at this time, will you introduce the State Board members?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board Executive, and to my immediate left is Brian Wiston. He's the State Superintendent, and he serves as the Chairman of the State Board of Education. John Austin is on his left. John Austin is the President of the Board. He resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the Board's Vice President. She resides in Rochester Hills. Michelle Fecto's the Board Secretary. She resides in Detroit. Richard Xylee, Board Member residing in Dearborn. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Tracy Hordisky from Kennewa Hills. Across the table, Craig Ruff, representing the Governor's Office. He's the Governor's Strategic Education Advisor. Next to him, Eileen Weiser, Board Member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, Board Member from Detroit. Lupe Ramos Montini, Board Member from Grand Rapids, the Board's National Association of State Boards of Education Delegate. It's their association. And seated next to me is the Board's Treasurer Pamela Pugh. She resides in Saginaw.
Alright, with that, we'll move to introduction of new employees in the department. Vanessa, please.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educator, Student and School Supports, and I'd like to introduce Preston Hicks from our Office of Professional Corporation Services. If you could stand up and just tell us a bit about what you do here at the department, or, please?
I'm Preston Hicks. I'm with the Office of Professional Services, and I lead the Corporation Institutions on the PPI score.
Welcome.
I'd like to introduce Sandy Brewer. And she is new to the Office of Special Ed. Would you please talk a little bit about yourself and your job?
Sure. Well, I have 31 years of special education experience. I'm very happy to be here. I'm working in the Office of Special Ed and the Complaints Department, so we're handling those special ed complaints. I had worked for Verian Risa for the last 18 years as a teacher consultant and supervisor of students with emotional impairment and autism. So I'm very happy to be here.
Well, we welcome our new employees. Public participation forms. If you plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn, who is seating right here as soon as you're able. Forms are available at the table just outside the boardroom. Public comment will be immediately following lunch break, tentatively scheduled from noon today. The goal would be to have public comment from 12 to 3 for three hours and then take a vote, so we'll see if we can stick to that. Please note that the guidance for LGBTQ students is on today's agenda for discussion and action. Please refer to items D and J on the agenda if that's what you're wishing to follow along on. We do have a full agenda, so I'd ask everybody who will be speaking on agenda items to stick to the timeframes given, so that we can respect our large audience and hear from as many of them as possible, if not all of them. Discussion items. First item on today's committee, the whole agenda is presentation in Michigan student tests of educational progress, known as M-steps. The Michigan Department of Education released the statewide results before Labor Day this year, keeping the promise we made last year to deliver the results in a timely fashion, while also reducing testing time and increasing our communication and support efforts. Today's presentation provides you a brief overview of those results. Next steps are none. The presenter will be Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student and Support, School Supports. Vanessa, please.
Good morning. Merz, could I have somebody log us in? Just general. Good morning, and thank you for giving me time on the packed agenda to talk briefly about our M-step results. As Superintendent said, we were very pleased to be able to get the data from the 2016 M-step in the hands of educators and parents much sooner than last year, so it can be used to be part of the conversation around what every student needs to be successful in the coming school year. Thank you. I will go through this presentation rather quickly, and we can take questions. But we wanted to talk briefly about M-step this year. We made some major improvements, and so we really see this as a triple success. We spent less time testing, we got much faster results, and we moved to computer adaptive testing in ELA and math. Just a couple statistics that may be interesting to you. Ninety-five percent of our schools took the M-step online. We administered 3.2 million test sessions, a high participation rate, and the, we did use computer adaptive testing in ELA and math. And again, I try not to say this too many times during the presentation, but we were so pleased to be able to offer preliminary results within 48 hours and all of the final results out on August 30th, and just want to take a moment publicly to thank very much the team here at the department who worked tirelessly to make these improvements this year. Some of them are in the room, some of them are downstairs. And thanks to the educators in the field who partner with us on this. So we know test results are not the whole story, but if you want to use them to drive improvement in conversations, you have to have them. So we've really made a lot of efforts here, and we hope that can be positive for schools and students. And so, three areas of success, like I talked about. There were proficiency gains in nearly two-thirds of the grades in subjects, students spent less time testing, and we got the data out much quicker. We showed you some of these tools over time, but we put a lot of efforts into communication tools to support engagement. So apparent report video, how to read a student score report. Again, assessment data needs to be used, and to be used, we have to support that assessment literacy. You helped us by adopting assessment literacy standards in the last year, so we can continue to focus our efforts on beyond just the test. How do you use it? How do you understand the information? And how do you combine it with other forms of information to make good decisions about instruction for students? Couple result highlights. We saw an increase in proficiency in nearly two-thirds of the grades in subjects, and there was good news in science. Student proficiency increased in all three grade levels. Student proficiency in English Language Arts increased in three of the sixth grades. In math, increased in four of the sixth grades. And in social studies, we saw some slight decreases. At the high school level, I'm sure you all remember, we, there's two components to the high school test. One is the Science and Social Studies, which is Michigan-created, and so we saw that increase in science here and a slight decrease in social studies. And then this was our first year of delivering the SAT as our college entrance exam. So these are our mean scores. SAT total mean score was about 1,000. Evidence-based reading and writing, 507.5, and then mathematics, 493.7. And then this is probably the number that's more interesting to most of you, especially as we wait for College Board to put out some of their national averages and things, so we can say, what is, how do our scores compare? But this is the percent of students who are determined to be college and career-ready based on College Board's cut scores. So about 60% of our students in 11th grade are college and career-ready in evidence-based reading and writing, and approximately 37% in mathematics. Results by subject and grade, I'm going to go through this very quickly. We can return and talk to it if you want. You have it in your PowerPoints, available online for all of you in the room or watching at home. But in short, there's four student performance levels. You see them there. Not proficient, partially proficient, proficient, advanced. And we presented you with two years of data results for the M-step. So ELA, this is a stacked bar chart. You can look at that. It goes 2015, if you read from left to right, 2015 is on the left, 2016, and then it's done by grade. So on the very far left is third grade, 2015, 2016. You see the changes in the different levels. And here it is in tabular form. Like we said, there were increases in a lot of grades. Not all grades saw an increase, and we know that a focus on third grade literacy is something that we are collaborating with across the education space, so we will continue to work on that and see these numbers improve over time. Mathematics, again, there were increases in some of the grades, decreases in others. Science, like I said, I'm not going to read these tables to you, so we can return to them if you'd like. And then here's the SAT scores one more time. You can see the possible ranges, and then the essay scores on reading, analysis, and writing. Michigan students all take a long-answer test in the high school. That's part of our legislation around a college entrance exam. And with that, Superintendent Wiston, I'll turn it back to you.
Well, again, we do want to celebrate, as you said, the triple lower testing time, faster results, more information to parents and staff, and quicker. So I mean, I think we do need to celebrate the good work of our team. Really, this is only the second year, and to have 95% tested online is very good as well. So great work to the team. And while the results still aren't where we'd like them to be, we did see, as you said, two-thirds showed improvement. So certainly, it's going in the right direction. Any comments? Questions? Thank you, Eileen, and then John?
I'm, as a former member of the National Assessment and Governing Board, I'm very anxious about the third grade reading scores, because as you look at where scores improve at certain points in the pipeline, it often reflects implementation of good standards and solid curriculum. Given the fact that this was taken at the same time of the year as before, what conclusions are you drawing, or what concerns would you raise about the third grade score drop from across the board? It's all the way through, from basic, not proficient to proficient above.
Right. So I think what's important with statewide assessment scores is to see them as one piece of a larger picture. So they're like blood pressure at your doctor's office. If your blood pressure's high, it doesn't necessarily mean anything. You have to dig further into the causes. So I would caution anybody from over-drawing conclusions about what's working or not working based only on this number. But I would say, we, when we look at ELA across the board, we know we need more than about 50% of our students who are proficient in ELA. So we need to look at that local data. We need to look at the interventions. The focus on English, or the focus on early literacy that the legislature and the governor and the department have taken in the last year, a lot of those implementations are just starting. So we need to stay the course, course-correct as we go along, and keep being honest about intervening sooner with students, so that that third grade score isn't the first time you understand where a student's at. And I think that as we implement those interventions and that plan, we'll be able to kind of detect this sooner, so.
That's hopeful. Then I would just ask a quick follow-up question. Again, with the National Assessment and Governing Board, which is testing online for ELA for fourth grade, we've always, we always recognized the issue of children having computer literacy at early grades. How many, can you, I don't know if you have it at your fingertips, but how many more children were tested in ELA online in third grade this year than last?
Well, like the superintendent said, 96% of districts were fully online, so it's up from 82 last year. So the number of kids, I don't know, but it's, it's more. I also think over time, the likelihood of having the M-step online being the first online test event that you see as a student is lower over time, because there's more work with that formative assessment with the online diagnostics happening in the younger grades, some of that through department-supported efforts, so.
So our focus maybe this year should be on being concerned about the drop, but looking to next year to see if there is, if schools are taking earlier computer literacy to heart and better reading instruction to heart.
Yep, and solid implementation of the standards at all grade levels, and doing that, a high-quality, multi-tiered system of support to make sure you're intervening with students sooner.
Thanks.
Good questions. Thank you. John?
Just remind us all that we've put in place some very rigorous learning expectations for our kids, and it is, it's expected that as we begin to assess them, they're going to be honest in where they are, and that we do stay the course, as you suggest, that we provide support and allow time and help our educators deliver on that high bar, and they will show progress. But it's not expect, just like Massachusetts and other states, we have moved to very rigorous learning standards, and that's where it should be. And it's no surprise that they're perceived by some as not where they need to be. They actually are an honest assessment that we need to keep moving higher, and we will.
Agreed.
Yeah, and when I first came here now, a year ago, one of the first things we did do was raise the standards of what it meant to be proficient in reading. And so we, I don't know the exact numbers, but we dropped from around 70 to 50 because of that. And that was just saying, because we wanted kids to jump higher. So we have raised the standards, so that is another reason why you see the lower score. But it's the right direction. Kathleen, please.
Well, I want to commend the staff for the terrific job.
Thank you.
I think it was really impressive.
Thank you.
To speed it up and reduce the testing time, and all of those things are really good. I'm still dismayed that the scores aren't higher. And I know that we're working towards that. I know we raised the standard, so I know that we're working in the right direction, but it's hard to be patient when, when you're like to see much higher, not only the percentage, but the scores themselves being higher.
Agreed.
We're working in the right direction, I think, but I did want to say I'm impressed with whether you actually administered it and scored it and reported it and all of that. That's.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the team here, we really appreciate that acknowledgement, and they're just really dedicated people who knew that this year was very important, that we make substantial improvements from last year. So appreciate the recognition and, you know, agree that when we look at the proficiency scores, I think it's a call to action, a continued call to action for all of us, that we're being honest about where Michigan students perform, and we want that to increase. So we'll work together toward that goal.
Dr. Z, please, and then Lupe, and then Michelle?
I know in standardized tests, there's a margin of error.
No, I don't. We don't even.
The fallback of less than a percent in social studies, I don't regard that as particularly significant, which means that the gains that are less than 1%, I don't think are particularly significant either. But what, help us, what would be a significant change as opposed to, what would be a meaningful change as opposed to within a margin of error? Or I guess the big question is, one, this year's fifth graders may, for what reason or another, be better prepared, less prepared, a higher average intelligence, or lower skills than the previous year. So it's hard to know what changes in scores are due to the cohort being tested versus the application methods, or standards, or whatever else. So if you could help us get a feel for what would be a significant change
Right.
that would point to improved performance rather than accidentals.
Right. Well, I think you're calling out a really important distinction between a test score and research into why that test score happened. So the test score is, again, a diagnostic measure. It is what it is. It could be, it's impacted by many factors, some of which we can quantify and some of which we can't. You called out cohort effects. One cohort can just test differently than another, either because they're actually better, or because they like testing more. I mean, there's a lot of factors. So that's why we don't want to draw a bunch of causal conclusions off this proficiency table. Rather, we want to say, here's information. Now let's dig in and understand it more. And if we want to conduct high-quality research with matched comparison groups, or any of those things to help you better say, this is what caused it, we can do that, and we have research partnerships in place that do. What would be a significant gain? You know, any gain or any loss when you assess the whole population is a real gain or loss. It's not a, it's not a sample. That being said, in general, you're right, there's fluctuations of the 1% to 2% every year, up, down. I think what we want to see is, over time, fluctuations up, not up and down. So if the trend line is working its way up, and that's what we were starting to see on the meet. So now, of course, the trend line, we're kind of working toward a new trend line. You know, 3% and 4% is bigger than 1% and 2%, but it's hard to say exactly what's significant. So I think it's just more important to not try to say how significant or insignificant it is, but say, this is really what it is. It's an accurate count of proficiency, and then go to that second step of why.
And if I may observe, testing is like taking a photograph of the ocean.
Absolutely.
At one point, the wave is up, another point, the wave is down. The way you tell the level of the ocean is you get as many photographs as possible. So no individual test is that significant, but it's the pattern that testing reveals.
Yep. And in support of the superintendent's vision and the department's vision in this way, working toward benchmark testing, which give you multiple measures within a year, which helps you understand both the picture of the ocean and the change in the picture over time. That'll give us more information about student performance, which will, will help.
Very good. Thank you.
Lupe, then. Michelle, please.
I am concerned about the students that are being tested. In talking to teachers, which I talk to a lot, one of their big concerns, and I'm going to refer to some of our schools in Grand Rapids that are in the bottom 5%, and this is middle school. And the teacher was telling me that the students are tested even if they arrived yesterday. And also, students are tested even if they have ever been in school before. So of course, she says, our school is going to be at the bottom 5 because everybody's tested. And so that's not a true picture of what is truly happening in our building. So, you know, what do I, what information do I give her concerning the test? And of course, their school is going to be at the bottom 5 maybe forever, if these are the students that are coming to that particular school.
Right. So this is an excellent question, and it's the, it's the distinction between the requirements around assessment participation and reporting, and then accountability. So when we run accountability, any student who's not been in a school or a district for a full academic year doesn't count toward that school's accountability. So they wouldn't count toward their ranking, or toward their color, or in the future, their A to F grade. They do have to test, you're right. And so when you count up the number of proficient students, that student, of course, is likely to be not proficient, because they just arrived here. We have been advocating with, through this ESOP process with the Federal U.S. Department of Education for more flexibility in when you test newly-arrived students. Currently, you can exempt them from the ELA for one year, but they take the other subjects, which of course, doesn't make a lot of sense of, it's not super sensible. So right now, we're working on advocacy agenda, supporting schools and testing them, and then we don't count those scores when it's time for a high-stakes decision. Not just newly-arrived students, any student who hasn't been in that school for a year. So the school could have had time to impact their outcomes. But they do test, and they do show in the aggregate reporting. And hopefully, in this new, next era of federal regulations.
Extend that time.
And they've already opened up, the feds have already opened up some more flexibility, and I think we are hopeful that our advocacy and other states' advocacy will lead to more.
Michelle, and then Eileen, please.
I think Lupe and Richard kind of spoke to what my concerns were. Because, you know, you see these numbers in an aggregate, and I know there's a lot of variability across the state. And I was particularly interested in looking based on socioeconomic status, and how that differs. And I think, but that also gets to what Lupe's saying, it's oftentimes there's more transience in the, you know, in communities that don't have a lot of wealth. And, you know, to try to understand some of those underlying reasons why scores may look different in different communities, and then that helps us to figure out policy to address it. So I'm assuming that this sort of research on this, this data will be done and provided about, you know, sort of breaking it out and looking at it in different ways, so that we can discuss policies.
Yep. So my answer is yes and probably. The first part is, breaking it down by subgroup is, we are, it's in my school data, again, thanks to SEPEE's partnership on my school data. But the why, we need, we need research partners, and we need district partners to sit with us, because a lot of what we can see in the state data doesn't tell the why. So we might not know things about the hunger level of the student on that day, or things like that. So getting to the why requires, we can do the work, but we need partners to work with us on this. And also, it's part of the work that schools and districts do with their school improvement planning process. They say, here's the number, why, what are we going to do about it? And we want to support that effort, continue to support that effort, so.
Eileen, please.
And I just want to make this brief, because I know we're trying to keep on schedule. But because the department implements the Board's vision, and we're charged with supervision of K-12, I would urge us to start taking a look, the Governor's Education Commission certainly is, to start taking a look at what policies and laws are in place that are causing 54% of our kids to not be able to access that reading proficiently, proficiently in third and fourth grade. We're doing better in the higher grades. The pipeline may yet show that it's stronger than it appears on this test. But there, we, the one thing that we could make recommendations on are laws, and the one thing that we have control over is policies. We can't control implementation. You folks are doing heroic measures on assessing well, but that's our role. And I think that we should be starting to ask those questions. Thanks.
Alright, going to close with Kathleen, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that you've got this assessment work group. You're coming up with new ways of doing assessments. And I think that's, we're going to have a big discussion on that within a few months, I presume. So I think that, that's what we should be focusing on. That's the policy that you're talking about, Eileen, and all the issues that were raised. Because this is just a report on this particular test, and there are a lot of questions about whether we're going to continue this test or have another test. But that'll be part of that review of the work group's recommendations. And I presume we'll spend some time on that, or we, the new board will spend some time doing that.
Alright, thank you very much for the report. Presentation on Proposed Guidelines for Prevention of Suspension and Expulsion of Children Birth Through Age Eight in Early Education and Child Care Programs. The purpose of this guidance is to support providers of early education and care programs as part of the P-20 system by offering recommendations from the State Board of Education for preventing and/or significantly limiting expulsion, suspension, or other exclusionary discipline practices in early childhood settings for children birth through eight. Staff will review the draft guidelines in today's presentation. The next step will be to take it out for public comment and consideration. We'll then come back to the Board at the November Board meeting. Our presenters today are Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning, and Caitlin Farick, Director of Head Start Collaborative. Thank you.
Good morning. The purpose today is to bring a new statement to the State Board for consideration. The issue of expulsion and suspension of K-12 has been addressed by the State Board in the past with a statement back in 2014. However, over the last decade, there's been more research done and more awareness that young learners, birth to eight, birth to five, are being expelled and suspended from preschool programs and other type of childcare at pretty high rates. And so, why is this important? We know that the research is sound, that the first years of life are essential for setting a foundation for future education, for future learning, and life success. We know from our own Great Start Radiance Program, as well as other early childhood quality preschool programs, that quality early learning environments lead to higher graduation rates, just decreased chronic absenteeism, and fewer interactions with the juvenile, as well as adult criminal justice system later on in life. However, again, it's addressing the issue head-on. The reality is, very young children, infants and toddlers even, are being expelled and suspended from early education and care environments on a regular basis. And those disruptions may diminish the benefits of what quality early care and education settings can have, and that we know have. This statement that we have prepared for consideration and guidance This statement that we have prepared for consideration and guidance does align with the State Board's adopted top 10, 10 goal to provide every child access to an aligned high-quality P-20 system for, from early childhood to post-secondary. So I want to take a moment just to reinforce the issue of prevalence. The main research has come out of Yale University over the last decade. Walter Gilliam is the lead on that. And to be able to really document what is the prevalence. And that really shows that when you look at early childhood settings, birth to five in particular versus K-12 settings, children in early education settings are expelled or suspended three times more than in K-12. And if you look at, within the pre-K in particular, early childhood, those that are run by public programs, like public schools, other publicly funded entities, that it is four times more likely to be in the private sector versus the public sector of settings. And, but what we also know, and we see up the chain in K-12 as well, is that there is disproportionate representation in those expulsion suspensions of even the youngest children. And we see it by race, ethnicity, as well as gender. National data, unfortunately, we don't have it at the state level at this point, but national data do show that African-American boys in particular make up 18% of pre-K enrollment, but are actually suspended or expelled 48% of the time. So that's a very disproportionate, more than twice the representation. In addition, when you add in other boys of color, Hispanic, they make up a total of 46% of the pre-K population in care, but are 66% are suspended. And when you look at all boys of all race ethnicities, they make up 79% of the suspended when, or 82 suspended more than one time. There are many reasons that contribute to this situation in early childhood. But the issue of suspension expulsion in young children, it's an adult issue more than it is a child issue. Yes, we have behavioral concerns, we have some mental health concerns, but in reality, it's about support and education of the adult providers in those settings. And so there, the research is pretty conclusive that it is a dual generation approach to dealing with this situation and supporting the care providers primarily to be able to deal with reducing or limiting expulsion suspension of young children. Part of the reason, from a policy standpoint, is that early education is a voluntary system. It is not universal in most states. It is not universal in Michigan for pre-K, much less any type of universal programming for zero to three-year-olds. And for the broad spectrum of providers in early education care, to have this as a topic, a priority for a policy, is not something that's on the radar. Basic licensing, yes, and continued education to be able to, careful as children, yes. But an issue of this importance is typically not on the radar for policies that they have in place. And they, typically in the private sector, they don't have as many supports as the public sector. And we see that across the, up the board. What do we, what's going to happen if we continue to limit our attention to the subject? It's very clear from the K-12, as well as the limited amount of research in the early childhood years, that there is greater likelihood of expulsion repeated in the upper grades if it starts early on. And that sets the tone for children's attitude about loving to learn, loving to read, education in general. So then we see academic failure, we see dropout, we absolutely exacerbate inequalities and access issues to high-quality education. What exists now, as I indicated, back in 2014, the State Board had adopted a policy on reducing expulsion and suspension for K-12. Why are we bringing one for birth to age eight with a little bit of overlap? Primarily for two reasons. One, the current policy focuses primarily as K-12 and assumes the provider is a public school setting. In early childhood, as the department knows, we have a broad continuum of providers in home, foster care, private childcare centers, public childcare centers. And then also, the current policy focuses on restorative practices as one of the main strategies for dealing with it. And very young children do not have the cognitive capacity at this point to understand that concept of restorative justice, restorative practice. So the current policy that we're putting forth to you actually does align well with the K-12. It just adjusts for developmentally appropriate practices for young children. And so I'm going to turn over to Caitlin at this point to explain what we did to develop this policy.
Thank you. So in developing this policy, we took a comprehensive approach. We had discussions with a number of stakeholders. We researched free resources that were available. We looked at other policies, including one which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, that was issued a joint policy statement by the Department of Health and Human Services and the U.S. Department of Education. And we reviewed as well, policies that existed within our state as well as in other states. Again, as Richard mentioned, many states are just in the infancy of working on suspension expulsion policies for early learning. So we were excited about the opportunity to develop something of our own. And we also researched quality indicators, which are included in the policy statement and guidance that was given to all of you that we will release for public comment, to really to think about what providers can do and what they can think about when creating their own suspension and expulsion policies for their programs. And so we convened a work group. First, we convened an internal work group of our own Office of Great Start staff. You can see there are the list of those who participated, as well as our colleagues from other state offices, including those in the Department of Health and Human Services. As you'll see, one of the main focuses and main topics of discussion in our stakeholder group was around supporting the social, emotional well-being and physical health of all children as a means of eliminating suspension and expulsion. So their input was very valuable to us, as well as childcare licensing, since they are often those who maybe from the state interact the most with our providers of all levels.
Thank you, sir.
We then, after our internal work group, decided that we wanted to expand our efforts and work more with those outside of state government, receiving input from all sorts of advocates, providers. You can see the list right there. For the sake of time, I won't go over it. You can go ahead. And so the history of these efforts, how we got to this point in front of all of you, there really has been, again, a focus on the issue of suspension expulsion for young children. Some of the data, Richard pulled, is from Office of Civil Rights report that really drew a lot of people's attention, I think, for the first time, about how prevalent preschool suspension in particular is, and how much it impacts certain populations of our children. And this is, was seen in the fact that for the first time, pieces around this were included in childcare reauthorization regulations. Also, in December of 2014, there was a White House Summit on Early Care and Education, and at that point, there was a policy, a joint policy statement issued by the Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Education. And we used that sort of as our starting point for this policy. Our internal Office of Great Start worker reviewed this, and there is a lot of great information in there. But we felt that, again, it was really geared both towards providers and towards states, but we wanted to create something that was a little bit more Michigan-specific and also competency-based, something that providers could use as a resource in creating their own policy. And so after that, we looked at the things we liked about that policy statement, the resources that they include in that statement as well, and then started a draft of our own statement, at which point, we then convened our external work groups to refine that policy. Went through many rounds of revision. And we are also currently working on a resource guide to go along with the guidance. So again, really, what this comes down to is we really encourage all early education and care providers to establish a clear and explicit statement to pay attention to their policies for disciplining children and for suspension and expulsion with the goal of limiting suspension expulsion of young children, and only really using suspension or expulsion as a last resort. These are the quality, a synopsis of the quality indicators that are included in the policy. These were developed, again, in conjunction with our stakeholder group. It was really led by them. Again, it was really important to them through these drafts to really make this something that didn't put the onus of behavior on the children, but really changed the behavior of adults in the classroom and equipped them with the skills and the thinking to develop a strengths-based approach that respects cultural competence, the development of all children, and focuses on strength, the strength of adult-child interactions. So our next step, we are seeking public comment on this statement, finalizing a resource document which will expand upon all the quality indicators and provide resources. We heard from our stakeholder group that yes, it's great to draw everyone's attention to this issue, but really, providers need resources to be able to be successful in this. As Richard mentioned earlier, this is really an adult decision. It's not about the children as far as suspending and expelling children, but we need to equip providers with the skills they need to make other choices. And so we're hoping to be able to use this as a platform for beginning to do that. And so again, we'll be back in November, hopefully, to request adoption of this statement and guidance.
Board questions, please. Eileen, and John, and then Eileen.
I commend you on putting this together because when you say adults are making these decisions, that's absolutely the case, and they're modeling bullying without understanding they're doing it. Because they are forcing adult frameworks on little kids who don't understand it and they're not able, they don't have the training or the knowledge to help children toward a framework of better behavior. I see your heads nodding. I'm not so sure you agree with that.
Oh, I do.
You do? Okay. My, my concern is that with Susan Droman's work, we already know that quality providers in preschool are few and far between, given the needs of the state. We know that children in Michigan, we've ramped up early childhood service provision, but we also know that the need is great. And I'm very concerned, I'd love to have you comment briefly, on how you see this working with the pipeline that we have of trying to train providers already. I don't know whether people will back away from this work completely, whether they will welcome and embrace the opportunity to make a real difference in how children will function in, in K-12 and life. But I'm, I'm very concerned that we may need support for this in ways I don't envision right now to actually have it happen. And, and the work is vital. There's no question in my mind for that this is key to changing how kids function in high school and life.
Well, I, you know, this isn't mandatory, which is just, I think that's important just to iterate. Obviously, we want people to incorporate this into their practice, but it's not mandatory. And to your point, I don't know if Susan has more of a solutions-based answer, but we know, we know this, that is a problem. And Richard and I, as well as some of our work group members, participate in a learning table around this that's convened by sort of several federal and other nonprofit agencies at the, at the federal level. And really, all the states are sort of, I think, struggling in this position because we know it's really important, but we know that our providers are tasked with a lot. And we also know that we have a part to play in all of this, but right now, we don't really have the fund, we don't have funding. Yeah, I mean, I don't, do you?
Susan, did you have any comment?
Well, this is guidance to the field.
Yep.
Susan, could you stand up or something?
This will be guidance to the field, like most of the policy statements we adopt as the board. One of the more interesting facets, and why I was so, so happy that Caitlin stepped up to co-lead this work, is that Head Start has had a policy for many years that they don't expel any child. And so in some ways, you start looking at, well, okay, so how does that work and what can we learn from them? And so to me, it's really learning from each other about how we actually deal with problematic behavior. And it's very similar to looking at positive behavioral intervention across all of the ages, but applying it at a younger level. And so it's going to require obviously some training and access to social, emotional resources that some childcare providers do not have.
So how many, just as a quick follow-up, because I'm really going to start trying to focus on this for everybody. How many years do you think it would take to have this policy in place with every childcare provider in the state? With our current resources? If it's desirable to do this?
With no additional resources?
Correct.
With no additional resources?
Correct. Twenty years, thirty years?
I'd be retired. Which could be, you know, anytime now, but.
No.
Even by asking you these questions, I understand it.
It's really helping people access social, emotional support in communities is also critical in this. And we're very uneven across the state of Michigan on the availability of help in that area. Michigan used to have a childcare expulsion project back in the Stone Age, and that was in politics, I decided that not valuable anymore. We may need to move some of our resources into something like that, which link professional support to childcare providers to deal with problematic situations. So we may need to reallocate some of our resources.
All right. Stay on time, and we're going to go to John, and then Pam. Was there anybody else? Michelle, and then Richard, and then we're moving on.
Just thank you for this, and I just want to emphasize how important this is. The African-American males and Latino youth have among the biggest gaps in ultimate student achievement, academic success, graduation rates. You know, anything that supports their engagement and learning and success, it's important for us to provide encouragement and guidance to the field. And I just, this deserves as much attention as the LGBT guidance that we're also designed to provide, overcome the particular learning obstacles of LGBT, but it's analogous and it's important. And this is exactly what we should be doing as a board, is helping encourage schools to increase engagement and success of different populations that have different challenges. And this is wonderful, and it's something we need to keep paying attention to throughout the whole continuum. African-American males and Latino youth in particular are among the biggest gaps in achievement, and this can help. So thank you.
Pam, Michelle, and then Dr. Z, please.
So first, I know that Michigan, and my community in particular, that I live in Saginaw, has benefited from project launch where we were able to get the federal funds from SAMSA to actually look at if we implemented some programming or actually some models in childcare centers, non-public childcare centers, what would be the outcomes for those children? And that was to, and that was actually to implement, work with the workers within those childcare centers. And we did see positive results, and that was five-year funded. And we're continuously looking in that, in our community to see how we can fund that. So I'm sure that that informed this work. As, as John has said, and everyone knows, this is very critical work and it is quite urgent. We see that our African-American males, aside from just parental issues, aside from just socio, or economic or income issues, are already being set up to have some barriers before them. So that speaks to that gap of African-American males. One of the things that I've, I talked about at a previous table, can't remember what the presentation was around, but as we talk about supports, and I don't see MEDC on this list, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And as we look at the chronically or the structurally unemployed, and it's the Community Ventures Program, where we're looking at anything from children being expelled from school to transportation issues, but I guess if we could focus on the children being expelled from schools that are keeping employees from being able to show up for their employers. So I mean, if we're not concerned about anything else, I mean, I know that there are people out there, or employers, who should be at the table and concerned as we talk about this as support. So I'm just wondering how we're including them, or how they're knocking on our doors to find out how we can make sure that their employees have good childcare.
We certainly will make sure that they're included moving forward. Michelle, and then Dr. Z, please.
I'm just wondering, you know, I've looked at the average salaries for some of the folks who work in these centers, and they're pretty pitiful. And so it's very critical work, and they've got a lot on their shoulders. So I'm wondering if that was part of discussion and recommendations and looking at turnover because. because of that, so if they're providing training and there's a lot of turnover, it affects. So, that's, I want to know if that was part of the discussion, if there's any thoughts about trying to change that. I'm not exactly sure how to do that, but I think it'd be something at least to consider and try to address. The other thing I wanted to know is if the training that you're looking at also looks at undiagnosed disabilities or elevated lead levels, which can affect behavior. And so, if there's any other, you know, as a mother who's had a number of kids with disabilities, and childcare was always incredibly difficult, especially, you know, with my kids, with my son with autism and a couple of my kids who had elevated lead levels. And, you know, it was just like, we can't deal with that. Go someplace else. I'm sure you'll find someplace, and there's no place. It's like, no place. And it does create economic hardship because then you have to miss work. Anyway, so I'm wondering if there's any sort of training to make some initial diagnosis or referrals for treatment and then to have it not be helped and to be able to have the supports to remain. So, those are two questions. The financial turnover salaries, and then is there training also focusing on these disability, these issues of disability?
So, on the undiagnosed and environmental risk pieces, in the public sector, publicly-funded programs, Head Start and Great Start Readiness Program, there is education and awareness for those. It's when we extend into the private sector that are, especially the family and group homes where there are smaller numbers of children, that's where we can establish, start the process of an education campaign, starting with the State Board's policy for guidance, that we can utilize and leverage the publicly-funded programs as we go out and present at early childhood conferences throughout the year. And so, that's how I see we can have an impact on the greater childcare industry, is deploying staff from quality Head Start, quality GSRP, and encouraging them to present so that conferences, regional conferences, smaller conferences that have touched to the greater childcare program industry, they're getting exposure to this subject, to this concept, and some professional development on early identification. And that goes to early screening and diagnosis, which is one of the pieces that we want them to include intentionally in their policy. So, it's a step, it's not the solution, but it's a step in the direction on that. The pay gap issue and turnover, this is an industry-wide situation, and it happens in public and private sector, early childhood programs. And so, that is something that we're aware of, and until, you know, we get to a tipping point, I believe, in society and policy, that early education is on the same level as K-12 education and should be invested in such a way, we're still working toward a piecemeal segmented approach to supporting that. And ongoing continuous professional development is our approach currently, but in order to get to that, it's about equity. So, we understand that.
Dr. Z, please, and then we'll close with Kathleen.
I have a somewhat different perspective on this, and very troubled by what's been presented, because the theory doesn't make sense. You have a big gap between the genders. In fact, that's a bigger gap than any of the ethnic gaps. And yet, you use the smaller gaps to argue that this is what holds minority kids back, but you don't seem to have any concern for boys, for males, which have the biggest gap. We faced the same issue when I served on the committee that came up with the suspension expulsion recommendations. Not to nitpick, but you appear to use the word "expel" when maybe suspend or send home for a day. Normally, we think of expelled as being sent out of the program. Yes. And that wasn't always clear. But I would point out for people that the usual reason for suspending or expelling a child from a program is the safety of the other children. And that needs to be given some real thought. If it's not appropriate to isolate a child, say, that bites, and it's not appropriate to send the child home so that the parents know that the child has a behavior problem, it's hard to imagine what training would enable daycare to deal with that particular situation in a more effective way. Also troubled by the attempt to reduce or impose a one-size-fits-all on the private market, the advantage of the private market in early childcare as well as in private education, is that people voluntarily choose it and by, and with the best of intentions, we raise standards, but then we reduce people's choices by making those choices for them. So, there are a number of grounds in which I'm kind of troubled by this issue.
Thank you, Dr. Z. I think, you know, it's an interesting problem that we have in daycare and in schools, the balance between having kids in schools and sometimes them or staff needing, you know, a timeout from each other. So, it is an interesting balance that we have to fight for the safety of all kids, but I think we can provide some tools for people to use to help reduce the number, and that's, I think, the goal. But you're right, it's a private sector, and they can make some choices.
And if I may make a final point, what also bothers me is the assumption that early education programs are necessarily good for kids. The best for kids is the attention of parents. Now, I can well believe that up to 20% of American families are in such bad shape that their kids are better off in an institutional program. And most kids are pretty resilient, and it doesn't affect them one way or the other. But for a good number of our children, time at home is being cared for by the people that love them, is the choice to be encouraged if we want what is best for our children. What was the final thought I had with that respect? And someone has brought up Head Start and its pioneering work in not expelling anyone. The failure of Head Start to make a significant and demonstrable difference in the lives of its students is well-known, extremely well-known. And what we are told is that, oh, well, they're not the high-quality care center. Well, that's kind of a wriggle term, isn't it? If only a high-quality center will do this, how do we guarantee a high-quality care center other than the accidental circumstance that high-quality kids come out of it? We haven't solved that problem of how to guarantee a high quality. The assumption is that more money will make a center high-quality, and I am very dubious about that. So, I, again, I think we need to think outside the box. The box of government can fix everything, and rethink what our policy is really encouraging.
Thank you. We're going to close with Kathleen, please. We're about fifteen months behind.
Oh, well, I won't take long. I just wanted to say, we know, I was going to say what you just said, Richard, about we know that high-quality, at least I know from research that I've known about for thirty years, that high-quality childcare that involves parent cooperation is very successful in improving the lives of the children that get it. There have been studies, Highscope and studies for years, have been, studies have proved this. So, I think that this guidance, and I'm glad that you mentioned that we do guidance on everything, not just LGBT. This is also voluntary. This guidance is in line with the whole effort to train childcare providers to do a better job. Now, there's some that are very, very well-trained, but the fact that what Michelle brought up about forced salaries, many of them, especially in the private sector, are childcare with people run with the greatest, best intent to help the children, might not have the skills or the knowledge of how to do it properly or effectively. So, all of this is part of the, what we're trying to do is to upgrade the childcare industry, which is growing. I mean, even Donald Trump today came out with a program for childcare. I turned the light on the top, because I didn't have a chance to read it, but I saw the headline. So, this is not something that's going to go away. This is going to be around for a while. And if there's more and more families or two families, both parents have to work, and that they do work, and they need childcare. So, we hope there will be good childcare. And this is designed, in my estimation, to make sure it's, try to make sure that it's good childcare. And that certainly should involve the parents involved, but that's critical. So, that's the essence of the Highscope studies that were done years ago. But anyway, I think that in line with what Eileen was saying, that we need more resources to do this, we do. And I remember sitting here at this table years ago, we had a superintendent of ISD here, I think it was Saginaw, actually, and it was, we asked him, what, somebody asked, how do we improve the high school graduation rate? We're talking about high school. And his answer was excellent childcare, early childhood education. And we've noted for years, and we just have to put some effort into, not only effort, but resources. So, thank you for doing this.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is Presentation on Building a Better Childcare System Report. Early childhood stakeholders are invested in identifying ways to improve the childcare system in our state. This presentation will provide an overview of the research and recommendations on the state of childcare in Michigan conducted by public-sector consultants on behalf of the Michigan Department of Education Office of Great Start. We have three presenters today. We have Susan Broman, Deputy Superintendent for P-20 System and Student Transition, Shalon Doxy, Special Assistant for P-20 System and Student Transitions, and Michelle Richards, Public Sector Consultants. Susan, please take it away.
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent Liston, and Kathleen basically did the introduction. When the Office of Great Start first began a number of years ago, the legislature required the office to develop a plan about how to improve early childhood in Michigan. One of the recommendations in that plan was to redesign childcare subsidy to ensure access to high-quality providers for all low-income children. A building, a better childcare system report that you are going to hear about today addresses that recommendation. The report provides a roadmap on what Michigan, including the Michigan Department of Education and all of our partners, need to do to improve the childcare subsidy program. First, we need to thank the Max and Marjorie Fisher Foundation for providing the resources to undertake this study, and funding public-sector consultants in the Citizens Research Council for doing the research on this topic. Joining me today to present the findings are the two main leads, or I call them the rock stars, on this project. Michelle Richards from the Public Sector Consultants, and Shalon Doxy from MDE, Special Assistant to Deputy Susan Broman. Poor thing. Anyway, I also asked both of them, because this is the secret sauce in projects like this, to share some of their motivations for this work. And you can see from the photos, they are obviously very sensitive to the issue of childcare. So, Michelle.
Thank you so much, Susan. And thank you for pointing out that you asked us to put our children up here for everyone. We have stock photos largely in the presentation, but these are our boys, and I think important to start the presentation there because the large portion of our work focused on Michigan's childcare subsidy, which is focused on our working families. But we also make recommendations in this report for how to improve the broader childcare system. I think regardless of income, many families struggle to access quality, affordable childcare. And we asked people when we did this research to talk to us about both of those challenges. But I did want to start, back to the stock photos, with some conversation about one of the policy levers that we have as a state, and that's our childcare subsidy. So, I just wanted to talk about four core components to the childcare subsidy. First of all, Michigan's childcare subsidy is invested to the tune of $156 million a year. That includes both a state and a federal investment in dollars that are helping working families afford childcare for their families. Through that investment, we're able to serve 30,000 children a year. And in order to qualify, families must meet both a qualifying activity, which includes working, completing a high school, a high school degree. They also must meet an income eligibility requirement. Michigan's is one of the strictest in the country, meaning that families in Michigan need to make less money monthly to be able to qualify for the subsidy. Right now, you have to have an income below 121% of the federal poverty level. For a family of three, that's about $24,000 a year. If you do qualify for the program, Michigan offers a reimbursement, which is an hourly, an hourly reimbursement to help you afford childcare. Currently, that rate starts at $1.35 an hour and varies based on a number of factors, including how old the child is, the quality of the program. Something to note here is that Michigan's reimbursement rate is one of the lowest in the country. So, many other states are looking at, they're operating this same program, and they're structuring it differently than Michigan is. Another piece of context, we mentioned just a minute ago that Michigan invests about $155 million in this program. That's a fairly significant decline from as recently as 2007, when we invested over $400 million. The recession hit childcare investments nationally fairly significantly, but Michigan saw one of the sharpest declines in the country. We used to be a relatively high-spending state. We were 11th highest in the country, but since 2007, our investment now ranks 11th lowest in the country. Our report took a look at how we could improve access to childcare broadly, like I mentioned, including both our subsidy investment as well as our broader system. Our research included two components, two broad components. First of all, we took a look at what other states are doing. Like I mentioned, there's a significant amount of federal funding for this program, and so we looked at how other states structure similar programs differently. But we spent the majority of our time engaging stakeholders. We talked to over a thousand people in preparation for this report, and we use tools like online surveys, focus groups, community forums, and we worked closely with the Office of Great Start to take all of that data and craft the recommendations that we're going to present today. In all of this work, we started by asking, asking parents and families what they want out of childcare. And all of them talked about wanting a high-quality, affordable childcare experience, where their child is safe, happy, healthy, and learning. We had a lot of parents talk about how difficult it was to balance the ideal childcare provider, somewhere where they were trusted that their child spent their day engaged in meaningful activities, with cost. Family after family, parent after parent, said they have to make a trade-off between those two things, and that that was a constant struggle and balance for them. We also, in this report, had a tremendous amount of optimism. We asked parents and families and providers what they felt was working in the system, and they continued over and over to highlight the fact that Michigan has noticed how important it is to invest in our young children, and we are starting to see policy changes that really allow our system to improve. They talked about an increased focus on quality. They talked about the expansion of our four-year-old preschool program, the Great Start Readiness Program. They talked about improved professional development. They, again and again, said there are areas to improve, and we're going to spend most of our day today talking to you about those areas, but there was confidence that the system could do better than we do today, and that there was a willingness to do that. Our recommendations focus on. Our recommendations focus on five core areas. These high-level recommendations that you see in your presentation and on the screen in front of you are our high-level strategies. They are followed by both sub-recommendations and very detailed strategies that lead to the roadmap that Susan mentioned. Because we wanted to spend our time today talking about the big policy opportunities, but we also wanted to make sure that there were clear next steps for the board and for the department to consider. So, I want to start by talking about a need to increase financial assistance to families. Many of our participants said things like, "I feel like I'm struggling to feed my kids and yet I don't qualify for the program." Many of them said, "Please know, I know you asked me to convene a focus group of low-income parents, but I want you to know that I'm struggling to find childcare for my children as well." And so, we started our recommendations by looking at, "How can you improve the affordability question?" Not solve it, I think this is a really difficult question, problem to solve, but what steps could you take to improve? And I want to highlight a couple of the recommendations on this slide. First of all, improving the application process. Last year, Michigan received 82,000 applications for the childcare subsidy. 60,000 of those applications were denied. They were denied for things like missing the income eligibility, which is a reasonable reason to be denied. But they were also denied for things like incomplete applications, missing documents, reasons that would make it reasonable to assume that with additional customer service, with a better application system, we could get more families past the finish line so that they can be receiving subsidy support. We also highlighted a need to consider raising the reimbursement rates. Michigan took a bold step to move to a tiered reimbursement system, which does increase the reimbursement for more quality providers. But I think more work needs to be done on the reimbursement rates in general. We also need to increase access to quality providers. It's one thing to be able to afford a quality childcare assist, or childcare provider, but it's another to make sure that that provider exists in your community. So, we looked at opportunities to connect more providers so that they would participate in the subsidy program. And we also looked at opportunities to address application problems that weren't directly connected to the application system itself. For example, we've had other programs within the Department of Education that have considered efforts like community-based eligibility. So, can we look at some of our highest need communities and create criteria that allow us to universally, or with a number of criteria, of course, allow for additional access in specific communities? We also looked at helping providers who are already identified as quality, those who are rated, you know, three, four, or five star in our quality rating system. How can we help them serve more children? We also felt like it was critical to focus on the providers that children currently attend. So, if you are in a provider, in a childcare setting right now, how do we help that childcare setter be, or setting, excuse me, be a higher quality option? So, we talked about a need particularly to support our unlicensed providers. 26% of children who receive subsidy support are cared for by an unlicensed provider. You may know them as family, friend, and neighbor providers. And we need to be attentive to the needs of that community as well, who may not see themselves as a professional childcare worker.
What was that percentage?
26. Yes, sir. We also looked at opportunities to improve the quality of the system more broadly. We have a number of efforts that are helping to define our expectations for childcare providers, from licensing to quality rating. How do we align some of those efforts so that we don't have providers with three different binders of expectations in their office, but we're able to articulate an aligned program that really helps them improve quality? While there's been tremendous work to increase the access to quality information about childcare providers, we continue to hear from the stakeholders that we connected with, that it's difficult to decide who's a quality provider and who's not. We had lots of parents say, "I'm a first-time, I'm a first-time mom," lots of them. And they said, "I don't have friends to ask. What am I supposed to do? Where am I supposed to go?" And so, this slide talks about the need to make sure that our DHHS caseworkers, who are a primary point of contact for families who are applying for the childcare subsidy, have access to the best information available about how to support families applying for this program. It's nearly a 500-to-one ratio when we talk about the number of families that caseworkers are serving. And we had a number of our stakeholders point out how difficult it was to get information from these committed but overworked individuals. And so, our recommendations try to identify opportunities to support our Health and Human Services caseworkers so that they can go on and support families. From the broader perspective, we also talked about the need to increase awareness about the need for quality childcare. In the presentation before, there was some discussion about the need for quality. And we continue in this report to not talk about childcare, but to talk about a quality childcare opportunity. Finally, as you started to discuss just a moment ago, of course, it is critical to support our early childhood workforce. Just like in our K-12 schools, having an effective adult in the room to facilitate developmentally appropriate opportunities for kids is a really critical element to having a quality childcare environment. However, we all know turnover is high and pay is low. And looking at our policy options to be able to better support these individuals, it's challenging and quite frankly, requires a very significant investment. There were previously many states who had looked at how to augment income for our childcare workforce. And after the recession, we just have fewer examples of how states are trying to improve on this front. We looked at a number of them and highlighted them in the report, however, but I think it's a place where we'll have to do some additional work as a state. I know that was a very quick review, but I wanted to turn it over to Shalon before we turn it over for questions.
So, I just want to briefly talk about the next steps that the office will take to move us forward with these recommendations that came out through this report. I know the board members received a hard copy. This will be available online later today on the Michigan.gov Office of Great Start homepage. So, the office will be looking to prioritize the five high-level recommendations that came out to the report to see what we can do to start taking the necessary steps to move forward with those recommendations. We will continue to work with our partners at the Department of Health and Human Services, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to implement the necessary steps or policy changes to move forward with those recommendations. And we are also in the process of reorganizing our Office of Child Development and Care to better provide more support and services to our providers to, again, provide that better customer service that was mentioned in the report. And now, open it up to questions.
So, I just want to say, honestly, this report shows we have a lot of work to do, but I think it's a good roadmap on how do we get there. And I do want to thank the other department heads, the governor's office, for their willingness to immediately jump on this and to work towards a game plan to resolve it. So, we've had good cooperation from across other departments and the governor's office to say, "This isn't where we want to be." And we all know we've got some work to do and we're going to jump on it. So, with that said, we're back on schedule, but I want to hear from people. Cassandra, Dr. Zee?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. One thing, I'll be very, very brief because I know we're in time, but I'm not sure if you looked at this at all when you were looking at increasing quality childcare programs. But I was actually just talking to a childcare provider yesterday who said she had to fight the zoning board for two years in order to open a childcare facility. Is this something that is common in Michigan and is it something that you looked at at all?
So, we did talk to providers about the barriers to increase access. And one of the things they told us is that if we want to increase the space we have to serve more children, that can be a really difficult proposition. And a lot of them talked about long battles to get their site approved. And we've talked with Office of Great Start about how to streamline the requirements while also ensuring a high level of health and safety. And we address it, albeit softly, in the report. Thank you.
Dr. Zee, please.
On the $156 million investment, what proportion of that is state and federal money?
It's about a third state and two-thirds federal.
And I thought I would divide the $156 million by 3,000 children, and I hope my math is, never do math in public. But I came up with 5,200 per child. And now, some of that goes directly to the child and some of that is the overhead. What's the rough proportion of that?
So, I will say that I am continuing to learn more about the data related to this. I will say that the case, the estimate that the HHS puts out for the cost per child per month is about $300. And so, the estimate that you just put out, to me, sounds high. And I appreciate the way that you were trying to do the math, but my understanding from HHS, who are the folks who manage the data side of this program, collect and aggregate the data, is that the 30,000, that the math calculation you just did, while initially correct, requires a little bit deeper explanation. And if we could follow up with kind of some of the nuance related to the data, I think we can help deepen the understanding for all, for both of us on that front.
Okay. Yeah, if it's 12 months, 300, then that's 3,600. That would suggest 1,600 would be the government regulation, regulatory cost, whatever you want to call it. As opposed, you know, there may be more elegant solutions that sound like a straight tax write-off or...
Of course. And there are some other states that offer some options on tax credit fronts that we've looked at for, not directly for this project, but for some other work that we've been sharing with Office of Great Start and talking about as well.
And that might address the difficulty that 60,000 people whose application comes back as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation and the roadmap to help us fix the issue. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation on statement and guidance on safe and supportive learning environments for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students. The draft statement on guidance on safe and supportive learning environments was presented to the state board on March 8, 2016. A public comment period took place between March 14 to May 11. Comments were reviewed and categorized, and a collaborative review meeting was held and the statement was revised. The statement will be discussed this morning and presented for action this afternoon if the board so chooses. The presenters are Kyle Grant, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operation; Kim Phillips-Gunop, MDE Contractor Coordinator, School Health and Safety Programs. There will be a PowerPoint presentation and then questions. Kyle, please.
Thank you, Superintendent. And thank you, board, for having us back here today to present on the development and the editing process of the guidance since we last met in March. I'm joined by my fellow East Lansing High School Trojan alum, Kim Phillips-Gunop. How'd he get that in there? We're going to tag team and walk through this presentation for you. And we'll obviously take any questions afterwards and during.
All right. So, good morning, everyone. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to be back here again to present the revised and updated guidance. It's been an unprecedented journey since we first sat here presenting these guidelines last March, with many different constituencies weighing in, each as passionate as the next. We received valuable feedback, both in support of and in opposition to the guidance. And we've also endured, unfortunately, some vitriolic speech, the likes of which we've never experienced before. To say it's been harrowing would be an understatement. Through it all, though, we've been deeply committed to a process that is both transparent and with the utmost integrity. We remained open to the critical feedback and adopted, adapted the guidance within the scope of the law to address issues raised by thoughtful Michiganders. It's our honor to share with you our process and the updated guidance. So, I thought it would be helpful to just, again, sort of give context to the conversation that we're having and starting with the demographic information about who are these students that are here in Michigan? So, our YRBS, the 2015 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, we have a question that allows students to self-identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, questioning their identity, or as straight or heterosexual. And 8.4% of Michigan public high school students identified as lesbian, gay, or bisexual. We know that that number is probably an underestimation. It doesn't include questioning students. It also doesn't include elementary or middle school students, so there's a population that just, the survey doesn't reach, so, but that gives us a decent estimate. So, it's a significant minority. And just to give you a comparison point, it's about, it's about the same, just a little bit less than the number of Hispanic or Latino and Asian students in the state combined. And when we look at the experiences of these students in our schools, you can see from this slide here, LGB students are about two, not about, they are 2.3 times more likely to have been threatened or injured with a weapon on school property. They're 2.3 times more likely to have skipped school because they felt unsafe. They're 1.7 times more likely to have gotten Cs, Ds, and Fs, which if you are feeling unsafe and not coming to school, makes sense that your grades might be impacted by that. And sadly, they're 4-point times more likely to have attempted suicide in the last 12 months. And as we talked about last time, that's about 10,500 Michigan LGB high school students who attempted suicide last year. Let's see. Yep, next slide, sorry. Just about a month ago, the CDC, who puts together, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey comes through the CDC, and they have, they put together a national comparison of states who do this YRBS. And so, we now have some data that compares the experiences of students in Michigan to the experiences of students across the country. And unfortunately, Michigan doesn't fare very well in relation to the rest of the country. So, you can see here in Michigan, almost 41% of LGB students were bullied on school property versus 23% of heterosexual students, which is an unfortunate number anyway. In fact, Michigan ranks the, sadly, Michigan ranks the lowest nationally when it comes to that number, that 23.4% is the lowest nationally, or sorry, is the highest number nationally. So, we do not do very well when it comes to bullying. Electronically, when it comes to electronic bullying, Michigan students experience 36, almost 36% of LGB students experience electronic bullying. Again, we've looked at data comparing, looking at being threatened or injured with a weapon or not going to school. And you can see our numbers are pretty comparable nationally when it comes to suicide attempt. So, I think it's helpful to sort of have this context as we're thinking about what the experiences are of LGBT students and sort of knowing that when you're experiencing this kind of, this kind of bullying, this kind of harassment, that it impacts both physical health and mental health, as well as student achievement and school achievement, which is something, obviously, we all care deeply about and want to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity to succeed.
So, a quick kind of summary of how we got here today in terms of the timeline of events. This really started as a conversation with our past Michigan Teacher of the Year, Rick Joseph, who made it one of his priorities during his time here with the board. He wanted to focus on and had conversations with board members about its importance, you know, really based on the data that Kim just presented, that it really impacts Michigan students. He'd seen it in his work in his district and really wanted to champion it. So, we were asked, the department was asked then, to pull together a stakeholder group that could look at this issue and pull from best practice and guidance from across the country and provide guidance to districts that could help support them improving their learning environment for LGBTQ students. So, that first stakeholder meeting happened back in January. From that, we came to the March Board Meeting and presented our draft, which was the culmination of that work group's efforts. Public comment began on May 9, the next day. And given the interest in this guidance, we decided to leave the public comment window open for two months, which is twice as long as our normal public comment period. We then, with our staff in the department, took in the thousands of comments, both online and through phone and email and fax, and started to essentially review and code and catalog what were the themes, what were the areas where people really most commented on, and Michiganders had the most interest in. It was really a daunting process. We had over 40 people in the department. I'd like to thank our team down at Courtney and School Health for their work, who trained staff within the department on how to review, how to do the coding, how to be impartial... staff within the department on how to review, how to do the coding, how to be impartial. And then, each of them spent at least a day reviewing comments. Every comment that was submitted was reviewed by staff here at the department. We held our second stakeholder meeting back in the end of June to share with the work group members the comment and start discussing how and what areas of the guidance that most Michiganders commented on and how we could help address some of those comments. And we, again, presented the final, that updated draft today for your comment consideration. We talked through this piece already, but again, we ensured that every staff member, every comment was reviewed by a person here at the department. Here, you can see a breakout of people self-reported when they commented online as to what group they were part of. You know, the largest group was 45% of the commenters were parents. We had a large number of students who actually commented, over 400 students also commented. So, it's great to see student engagement in this process. So, with all that feedback, thousands of comments, we had over 12,000 that were online alone, thousands more in email and phone calls to the department. The feedback really focused on three reasons, both against the guidance as well as for the guidance. The three primary areas where people commented on that were supporting, voicing opposition to the guidance were focused in these three areas. They felt that it threatened the safety and privacy and the comfort of other students, that there was not enough parental involvement and control in the guidance, in the original draft of the guidance, and that this guidance was really targeted only to a small number of students. The top three reasons for those that commented in support of the guidance was that they felt that promoted a safe and supportive, an inclusive environment for all students in school, a reduced discrimination and harassment for vulnerable populations, and provided needed guidance and support to schools who were looking for that. As we mentioned during our presentation back in March, this is not a new issue in our schools in our state. As an apartment, we've worked with hundreds of schools over the last 10 years on how do we create safe schools for sexual minority youth. We've done hundreds of trainings and trained over 3,000 staff in districts during that time period. So, schools have been addressing this issue in their district, and, you know, the hope of this guidance was to help better support them, give them opportunities and options for best practice that they may not know or didn't have to go searching for. We also had quite a number of groups that submitted letters in support or against on behalf of their organizations. So, this is a list of the organizations that submitted letters in opposition of the guidance. And this is the list of constituencies that submitted support on behalf of their organizations and supported the guidance. So...
So, we took all of this information into consideration as we revised and updated the guidance. The sort of key areas that we focused, or sort of the key ways that we collected and revised, collected feedback and revised the document, we're focused on public comment in all forms. So, as Kyle said, whether it was online feedback, letters, phone calls, however it came in, we took it into consideration. We also spoke with experts. So, we spoke directly with the U.S. Department of Education, with the Office for Civil Rights, got feedback from the U.S. Department of Justice, national researchers, statewide associations, key stakeholders, which will, there's a list provided on an upcoming slide, through the stakeholder review meetings. And then, the legal landscape has changed quite a bit, actually, since we met here in March, and so, we needed to take into consideration the changing legal landscape as well. So, these are the different key stakeholders who provided input into our process. They were organizations and constituencies that were represented at our stakeholder meetings. We had 81 people, 81 people attend meetings, 67 additional people provided feedback who weren't able to attend the meetings in person, but provided feedback either electronically, by phone, or through like an in-person meeting. And they represented 16 statewide education, health, and mental health organizations and as well as parent organizations. All right. And now, to the heart of it. So, as we're looking at the changes that were made to the guidance itself, there were, we sort of, we split, the guidance is split into two sections. The first section focuses on the purpose, need, and sort of general overall recommendations for LGBTQ students. Some changes that were made to this section, this is pages 1 through 3, if you're looking, if you're looking at the document. The first thing is, in the preamble, we found that there was some confusion in, through public comment, it was clear that there was some confusion about whether or not the guidance was voluntary or a mandate, or mandated by law. And so, we wanted to make sure right up front that people understood that this was voluntary guidance. Michigan is a local control state. We believe in local control. We want school districts to be able to decide for themselves whether this is a guidance document that they want to adopt or not. And so, we wanted to make sure that that was addressed immediately and right up front, that this is voluntary. Second was, we had a recommendation that looked, that spoke about the importance of meaningful family engagement, that emphasizes the critical role of family involvement and the impact that parents and guardians have as protective factors against negative health and educational outcomes. And family engagement is really a cornerstone of this document, and through public comment, it was clear that that wasn't clear to people. And so, we wanted to make sure that that was emphasized and highlighted throughout the document, and that starts in the first section. And then, lastly, there were some, like background and overall recommendations were enhanced. So, some wordsmithing and some language that was taken out, formatting, that kind of stuff. The second section of the resource, of the, sorry, not of the resource guide, of the guidance focused on supporting transgender and gender nonconforming students, this is pages 3 through 10. And again, there were sort of three main focus areas that we had when we updated it. The first is that we wanted to, we needed to clarify, based on current legal interpretations, the purpose and framework of the, of this section. And so, language was, again, updated to reflect title, interpretations in Title IX, to make sure that if a district does choose to follow these guidance, that they would be in compliance with Title IX. We didn't want to make any recommendations or suggest any actions that schools could take that would put them at risk of being out of compliance with Title IX. The second thing, again, focused on meaningful parental and family engagement. So, we added, we realized in the, in the first version of the guidance that we didn't provide context for how schools might come to find out that they had transgender or gender nonconforming students. So, we added a student identity section to clarify and provide that context. And that sort of provides some sort of background information and context for the rest of the recommendations that follow it. It speaks to, in that section, and also in the privacy and confidentiality section, which was changed, gives, again, emphasizes the role of parents and parental involvement. It also recognizes that schools need to balance the health and well-being of the students that they're working with, with the responsibility that they have to keep parents involved and informed. So, we have some updated language there. And again, as I mentioned, the privacy and confidentiality language was updated as well to protect students and families. And then, the last section is the gender segregated spaces. So, this is the sections on bathrooms and locker rooms and changing rooms. One concern that was raised quite a bit, actually, in our comments around safety was about students falsely, claiming a false gender identity to get access, sort of improper access to restrooms that they don't, that they shouldn't be in for improper purposes. And we wanted to make sure that we addressed that in the guidance. And so, that is spoken to in the guidance. Prevention is addressed, as well as processes that schools can use, that they actually already have in place, to address any issues that arise. So, hopefully, that will help, help schools with those issues. And then, again, it also ensures compliance with current legal interpretations of Title IX. And we spoke with the Office for Civil Rights to ensure that the language that was included as it was adapted would allow schools to be in compliance with Title IX.
Okay. So, here's what we got. We're going to go to 11:30. From 11:30 to 12, we're only going to take a half hour lunch. Right now, we have 60 people who wish to speak. That's three hours if everybody sticks to the three minutes. So, we've got to respect that because we've said we're going to vote around 3 o'clock. So, with that, we're going to join, we've got 15 minutes, and then, we're going to adjourn for lunch from 11:30 to 12. We'll start right back up at 12. Okay. John?
Thank you and the staff and all the stakeholders for thoughtfully absorbing and reflecting back all the comments and good ideas that poured in. I just want to encourage my fellow board members about this guidance. Looking at those numbers, you know, clearly, Michigan's LGBT youth are at tremendous risk for not being engaged in school and not learning. They're disproportionately the victims of abuse and violence, and again, five times more likely to have attempted to take their life. All of that changes, and there's good research that we talked about. When you create a supportive environment, and that's what we're encouraging school districts to do, to create that kind of environment, just as we should be, as I mentioned earlier, encouraging schools, create environments to work for, meet the learning challenges of other populations, to help them get educated. This is voluntary. I think most school districts do want to help kids learn and stay engaged and stay safe. And as we saw from some of the attorneys that are advising school districts, it's a good resource for legitimately answering questions about how to best do that. And as revised, I hope people will appreciate that the guidance addresses many of the legitimate concerns expressed by so many parents. Yes, of course, parents, we want involved in decision-making about their children. With some discretion for educators, if the child's safety and health may be a concern, just like what we talked about before, if there are abusive situations at home, educators can help make good decisions about these things. And of course, there are ways to solve the gender bathrooms and locker room and changing areas that maximize the privacy and the comfort and the safety of all kids and while respecting their rights. And that's what I think this revised guidance really, I hope, makes clear. And I would just draw your attention to the organizations and the professional associations that are strongly in support of this guidance, from the Michigan PTA to all the credible professional groups, the social workers, the counselors, the nurses, the teachers, the educators, the legitimate pediatricians group, not the hate-created group, anti-gay pediatricians group, which has 200 members nationally, versus the pediatricians group that does support this guidance, which has 64,000 members nationally and is, their Michigan chapter is strongly in support. So, I would hope that we will move to this afternoon after we hear more from everybody, which is important. Pass this guidance. It will help create better learning outcomes and a appropriate, safe and secure environment for all of our kids, including LGBT kids. It also sends a message that's important for us to send as a state, that we are welcoming an inclusive of all our people. So, thank you.
Going to go to Craig Dunne-Eileen.
Given the fact that, in a, in a school building, the best role models for kids are the adults, the teachers, the staff, would not these guidelines also affect the adults in the building? Just a question. Should they? I don't have an answer.
The behavior.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. We'll move on to Eileen and Pam.
I have tremendous respect for the passion and the time that's gone into developing these and for the basic need, the safety need, for the children who are impacted. I'm also deeply troubled by the fact that Michigan was just rated as the worst state in the country for bullying for all children. We're two times more likely, every, every child in high school has, is two times more likely than the best states to be bullied on school property, three times more likely to be cyberbullied. And the best states are states like Rhode Island, Florida. You know, they're states where achievement is solid, but not that much better, except in many cases than ours. What I worry about is that schools don't have to adopt or implement this, and that it becomes very troublesome for me that those bullying statistics won't be impacted for 100% of the kids. And I also feel strongly that the timing is not right to really ensure any change. I don't agree with all the things that are in the guidelines, but the changes can happen because it doesn't have to be implemented. Unlike every other state, we don't have any underlying civil rights law that protects LGBTQs to do any, any change with teeth, even if I don't agree with these all. And the state is currently in litigation over the legality that's cited on page four. So, we have one branch of state government saying that this can't happen, and we're about to say that it should happen, which makes no sense to me. I don't believe that until that's decided, schools could implement this anyway without legal repercussion, the potential for lawsuits and the confusion that could follow if policies have to be reversed. And I'd like to point out that even if we don't adopt this right now, if there's schools willing to go over that hump, they could use this document. I want every child in Michigan to be safe to learn because our U.S. Census Bureau statistics are the following: 20th highest in funding per capita for all sources, per K-12, 24th highest in per-child funding. We're 31st in eighth grade math, sorry, reading, 38th in eighth grade math, 41st in fourth grade reading, and 42nd in fourth grade math. And I challenge this Board, I've been asking the Board since this first came up, to look at 100% of the children and to go after bullying. The new survey shows us the need for that. If you do that, if you really change the culture in schools, which does start with the adults and children following, then you have a chance to really embrace the 8% of these children. I don't know what the statistics are in special ed children. We've had kids duct taped and hung coat racks and had boxes put over them. It's out there. Everything that's going wrong with our schools starts with whether or not children and adults can come to grips with what it means to really be safe to learn. So, I would defer this adoption until at least the contradiction of the White House directive cited in this document is resolved against the state's lawsuit. That, in turn, because transgender bathroom use was one of the biggest stumbling blocks to adoption of Elliot Larson's civil rights for the LGBTQ community, could lead to a firmer legal basis that would actually propel changes and good structure for all children at risk, especially LGBTQ, special ed, and minority children.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay. I've got Pam, Dr. C., and then Michelle, please.
So, some of the questions that we got or the input that we received was around the process used for crafting the document, mainly around the stakeholder group. And so, I'm looking at the slide, the key stakeholder input. And I'm wondering what, or how we were more inclusive of a variety of parents and students, and if you know what the makeup of the parents and students that were at that second stakeholder table.
So, we, we did do outreach to try to ensure that, that parents, any parent, anybody who wanted to be involved in the process had an opportunity to have a voice. And we had, we had the groups that were involved in the first stakeholder meeting and the second stakeholder meeting, there was certainly overlap, but they were not the same, it wasn't necessarily the same exact group of people. We had parents who, due to the timing, unfortunately, just given the sort of nature of that it was June and that people started going on vacation and things like that, there were a number of people who weren't able to attend the June meeting who wanted to. And we made sure that anyone who wanted to provide feedback but wasn't able to attend that meeting got a copy of the, of the guidance electronically and was able to provide feedback electronically, and that we made time to speak with people on the phone or meet with them in person to discuss their feedback, to make sure that anyone who wanted to be a part of that process had an opportunity to do so. And as I said, we did reach out to diverse, you know, a diverse group of constituents to make sure that different voices were heard, and anyone who felt that they weren't included at the first time around had an opportunity to be involved the second time around. at the first time around had an opportunity to be involved the second time around. Yeah.
Thank you, Pam. All right. We have Dr. Z., and then Michelle, then Kathleen, and then we'll be adjourning.
I think, exception to the selection of statistics that have been shared with us, the most bullied kids are the obese, not the sexual minorities. Recent surveys show that 80% of all kids, grades four through eight, reported being bullied. So, being bullied is not a particular problem of this particular group. And if we, and the kinds of solutions that are being proposed, are we prepared to propose the same solution for obese kids? Are we going to encourage hiring obese teachers to be their counselors and their role models and so on and so forth? If it's not applicable to the goose, then we shouldn't be proposing it for the gander. In the same way, the big gap in suicide is between boys and girls. More than five times as many boys in school grades have committed suicide than girls, which is an even greater proportion than the difference between the sexual minorities that you versus the regular, I should say, the whole group. So, again, this is a distortion of the picture of suicide. And who is in danger and why, why kids do this? A third issue, which is still in the revised things, the revised guidelines, is that the decision is left to the child rather than to the adult. And this decision is made on the basis of subjective feelings rather than physical condition. That is what makes it more a very poor set of guidelines, making adults responsible for the decisions made by children. We know that most children get it wrong because 80% of those who report gender confusion or gender identification with the other settle into an identity congruent with their physical condition later on. That's also borne out by some of the stats you have. You have like 8%, 8.5% high school students reporting identifying with LGB, and yet the population at large only have 3.4. And that's been very consistent through the Gallup poll survey. It suggests either that the majority of these kids eventually settle into an identity congruent with their physical body, just as the wife of Mayor de Blasio did. She wrote a noted article in one of the New York magazines telling us that she was a lesbian, and a few years later, she decided, well, maybe she could marry the man, Mr. de Blasio. So, the fact that these are fluid identities, especially for children, means that adopting policies that encourage labeling, as our proposed policies do, are a disservice to the majority of students in our school.
Thank you. We've got Michelle, and then Kathleen, please.
I just wanted to respond to some of the things that were said. So, when I, when I think about saying we can't have program, or supports, or policy to protect this very vulnerable group of students because other people are not getting the same protections, it seems nonsensical to me. And it's the LGBT community that have been incredibly vilified, told that they're, you know, deviants, told that they're ungodly, told that they are, you know, disowned by family members, by their parents, their homeless rate is through the roof. I don't think that quite is comparable to people who are obese or people who are, you know, I think that they are a very vulnerable group. And, you know, just being aware of some of the things that are happening to this group should be recognized. So, bullying and the intensity that this group has experienced, and thank God, people are becoming more enlightened and realizing that, you know, God made all different kinds of people, including transgendered and gay people. And to somehow equate them with like, you know, that boys, just being a boy is the same as being gay, transgendered. I just, I'm just having a very hard time reconciling this and understanding that point of view. I think if we look to protect our most vulnerable groups and look to raise and be inclusive of them, then it creates a community that's better for everyone. And bullying policies that we've had on the books are obviously not working. So, you know, I'm all for trying to address bullying across the board, but I really think that looking at, just as we look at subgroups of kids who are failing or not doing well on tests, you know, academically, we look at those most vulnerable groups and see what we can do to bring up for everybody. I think that applies to this as well.
Kathleen, then we'll be adjourning, please.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all the work that you've done, and that's, again, I think the staff has done a great job. So, that's appreciated. But I want to go back to the fact that we're doing this in line with, we do guidance to school districts, whether early childhood providers or to health providers, all the time. This is, this is what we do. We provide guidance to school districts and to educators. And we're doing this specifically because we were getting a lot of requests from school districts to help them deal with their LGBT students. I think the population as a whole is much more aware of LGBT than it was when I was a kid. It was never talked about. No one knew anything, and all these kids were there, but nobody, they were suffering in their own ways, and we just were not aware. Now, we are much more aware, and since we are aware, we should be doing something about it. And I think, in response to Craig's question, of course, the teachers are involved. The whole thing is to help the teachers and the educators do their jobs more effectively and to be very well, very conscious of the needs of all the students. And again, we are, we are concerned about all the students, including LGBT, as we are about any student who is being bullied, of these students included. We shouldn't, and I agree, obviously, the bullying, if the bullying is going on this much, that something is not being implemented with our policies, okay, it's not being implemented very well. So, we have to do something about educating local districts about all bullying, but especially for those that get bullied the most and the hardest. So, to me, you've done a great job of incorporating people's concerns and clarifying what we, what we want to do. So, I certainly support these. Thank you.
Cassandra, please, then we're adjourning.
Yes. Very briefly, first of all, I just want to thank you for acknowledging and taking seriously all of the comments that came in. There are clearly very strong feelings on both sides of this issue. We acknowledge that. We appreciate that. We're all entitled to our own opinions. We're all entitled to our own feelings. But I think what we're not entitled to is to tell someone else what their feelings are. And so, if someone says to me, this is who I am, I don't have a right to say, no, that's not, that's not who you are. I have to take their word for it. And I can't just think, well, you know, maybe you'll change, so I'm not going to worry. No, if that's who you tell me you are, then that's, I have to respect that. I am the only one at this table, as far as I know, who's actually a Title IX coordinator for a public institution. And I can tell you that Title IX, this is absolutely reflective of Title IX. Title IX says that you can't discriminate based on sex in any federally funded program. And discrimination takes many, many forms. It's not just a quid pro quo. It's bullying. It's denying a kid the right to use a restroom. These are all forms of discrimination based on sex. And so, I think, you know, even though we will have a new administration, we're still going to have a U.S. Department of Education, we're still going to have an Office of Civil Rights, and they are still going to oversee Title IX. And it is appropriate for us to acknowledge that this fits within the current structure of Title IX, and I don't think it's going to change so dramatically that we can't move forward.
All right. So, we're, yes?
Before we, I want to take a point of personal privilege
Okay.
under the NASP agenda. And I just want to say that I have to leave early, so I want to make sure that the board knows that Dr. Zilee will be voting for, in my place, at the NASP convention first, and he will be taking care of any NASP information or any recommendations that we have to make through NASP in my behalf.
Thank you for doing that. All right. So, we are going to take a half hour, so that's 12:05. For the audience that is here, if you leave the building, we cannot guarantee your place in line. So, do not leave the building. Secondly, if you do want to go get some food, you can go to UL in the elevator, UL, and there's a cafeteria if you follow down the hallway. We will start at 12:05. I think we have you by badge number, and that's how we're going to call people to speak. We have from, we have about 60 people. There may be more after lunch. So, we've got three hours to get this done, so I appreciate everybody's help. With that, we'll adjourn to 12:05.